Hey, good evening, everyone. Welcome. We're glad to see you as always. Thank you for being here to participate in the meeting. Please remember, this is a regular city council meeting, so the rules of decorum are in place. Cell phones at this time, if you would put them away, they are prohibited by law, except as authorized by state law code section 551.023. So please put those away and refrain from talking during the meeting. If you need to, please feel free to step out and then return. All right, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands before me.
Now, the Texas pledge.
On the line of the Texas pledge, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one.
You may be seated. Okay, we have a call on this evening. The only council member absent is Sarah Tandy due to family business. City Secretary, proof of notice of meeting?
Thank you, Mayor. The notice of this meeting was posted by 2:00 P. M. on October 14th.
Okay, thank you. Are there any public comments, City Secretary?
First up, we have Mr. Rick Stevens commenting on city staff updates and action items 1 through 5.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Rick Stevens, Ward 5. As a Geo City, I want to talk about a number of things, particularly action items 1. As the action items relative to the assignments for the boards and commissions, specifically their goals, my compliments, it's nice to see those on the agenda. Second is a municipal court. I know we're going to get some feedback from Gilbert a little bit later on. I would make a comment note that there were cases in his notes that says we're purged back to 2014. That happened a long time ago, so I don't know why it's taken so long to finally get that to settle out because municipal court cases only last two years. But it's nice to see that's happened. The third item is that I want to talk about was the city staff updates, particularly water. I know Keith put together a report. We're going to hear from Keith a little bit later on. Frankly, it caused me a lot of concern. I know we've always had issues with water in the city, particularly water leaks. That's the, it's the challenge that keeps on giving or the opportunity keeps on giving. I will say, setting aside the April month where we lost, you know, 750,000 gallons a day, three quarters of a million gallons a day. In fact, we almost lost as much water as we actually build. With the amount of water that we're losing, we're missing out on revenue about a quarter million dollars if you do it the residential rate, 2.7 million dollars if you go on the bulk rate. So that's certainly a lost opportunities and that data is right out of the city information. In the month of July, when we had the huge issue over water conservation, we're losing 40,000 gallons a day. And that says 27% of the water that was being produced was actually lost. What's amazing to me is why we're not spending time really trying to understand what the issues are. I'm sure there's, you know, the water leaks, and I know Keith and team are off working that. But while we're losing 20% of the water, the city's about to get a whole bunch of help from TDCQ and the Water Board. Because when you go above 10% of the water loss, you get all sorts of, like, when the city of Alpine want that. But the bottom line, you know, in my view, the city is not flush with cash. But when you're able to just give away a quarter million dollars or up to two and a half million dollars of revenue, that is a huge loss opportunity. So I'm hopeful that Keith's going to give a rundown and you and city council are going to talk about the opportunities to go work that. If I were you all, I'd go find some experts from outside the city to come in and do an objective view and give some recommendations about how to go forward. There are some great resources available outside of Brewster County, the groundwater district in Pecos, who I spent considerable time with. But you don't have to use them. Find ones that will help because when we're losing 20% of our water, which is what the city is losing, and we have to shut down because we can't deliver enough water to our residents, I'm a resident, I'm going to wonder what is this? Thanks very much.
Any other public comments?
Yes, we have Jeannie Choppless.
Okay, Jeannie.
And so Ms. Choppless is commenting on ordinance 2022-10-03.
Okay, go ahead and state your name. My name is Jeannie Choppless, wards 1, 3, and 5, I think. My comments are related to the board's commissions and committees, chapter 16 item here. Originally, when I contacted Geo, I asked about the qualifications required to be on one of these advisory boards or, you know, and was referred to some information. And just about all of them said that the person would be a resident citizen and/or own property as a taxpayer and be a qualified voter of Brewster County, Texas. That seems logical. This last bunch of notes that came through for review today, none of them mentioned anything about being like a registered voter or whatever. The Parks and Recreation Board is the only board that is saying that there can be two people on the board from outside of the city limits. My question is why these boards are limited to people just within the city when there are many people outside the boundaries of wards 1 through 5 that have a definite interest in the things going on in the city and particularly the airport board that was summarily dissolved with what was called a unanimous vote, which was only four of the five people voting. And they had known that there were at least 12 applications given for people interested in resuming an active airport board. But we were told that, well, no one is qualified to be on the airport advisory board. That's what prompted my questioning Geo is what are the qualifications? I still haven't gotten the straight answer on that. I am really concerned that there are quite a few people with very substantial interests in the airport. And this, this problem of having the airport advisory board or not having the airport advisory board
That's a three-minute timeframe.
has been, you know, it needs to be reinstated.
Any other public comments?
That concludes the public comments.
All right. Okay, moving on to presentations, recognitions, and proclamations. Okay, so I have a proclamation for municipal court week. Is anybody here? Come on up.
Surprise! All right, so we're at the municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas. And whereas more people come in contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined, and public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal courts. And whereas state law authorizes a municipality to either appoint or elect a municipal judge for a term of office, the Alpine Municipal Court is a state court and its judges are members of the state judiciary. And whereas the procedures for the Alpine Municipal Court operations are set forth in the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure and Other Laws made of Texas. And whereas the city of Alpine is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, and competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us and that judges and court personnel shall comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public competence in the integrity and impartiality of the judiciary. And whereas Alpine municipal judges are not policymakers for the city of Alpine, but are bound by the law and the canons of judicial conduct and are required to make decisions independent of the governing body of the city council, city officials, and employees. And whereas the city council recognizes that the constitution and laws of the state of Texas contain procedural safeguards and criminal cases for all defendants, including intangible defendants, and supports the Alpine Municipal Court in complying with such legal requirements. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the week of November 4th to 8th, 2022, be designated Municipal Court Week in Alpine, Texas, in recognition of the fair and impartial justice offered to our citizens by the Alpine Municipal Court. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand this first day of November in the year 2022.
Thank you, Mayor. Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the city mayor report. So from my meet with the mayor, phone calls, emails, and text messages, various things that I am hearing that council might want to know is noise complaints and a noise ordinance being needed. I know that we have a committee working on that, and I think the city manager is going to talk about that here in just a little bit. So that was a big one, noise ordinance. And then traffic stops, and I wanted to mention that I did see Daryl specifically out doing traffic stops one day when I was over at Judy's Bread and Breakfast, and I want to thank you, Daryl, for all that you do and all that your police department does. Thank you. All right, and then community organization meetings that I went to. The Alpine Historic Association is working to bring historic districts to our area. So they'll probably be presenting their ideas and information to council on how having a historic district can help to protect our history. And then also the Lions Club, they're continuing to work on the benches for downtown, so they're looking at donating some benches. Okay, so Saturday at the farmer's market, 10:30 to 12, I'll be there. Town hall meeting also on Saturday, and I encourage everybody to come to these. They're absolutely outstanding. This one will be Saturday, November 5th, this Saturday at 2:00 at the Granada, which is just a lovely venue. And what happens when you come in is you get a stack of note cards and you write your ideas on that. So you don't even have to talk if you don't want to, but you can make your ideas known. And then, of course, I wanted to remind everybody about City Talks, our radio show that's on every other Thursday at 9:05. And I believe Adalina Environmental Services is this week.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so Adalina Environmental Services will be on on Thursday, so be sure to catch that. All right, city attorney, no report. City manager?
The first item for discussion is the noise ordinance. Daryl LaSoya and Chris Brugia have been working on this for some time. We've also involved the music advisory committee, some of the members from there, because it does impact our music-friendly community. So we have a first draft completed. We did have to make a few adjustments after the Fiesta 1888 festival. We wanted to definitely look at how such a large venue impacts our city, especially when it comes to noise, because it was an outdoor event. It was presented to City Secretary Geo Calderon to be formatted. So typically, what we have our committee do is they put it in Word format, you know, maybe a one or two, an A or B or C. I mean, Geo goes through and does his magic and actually puts it in the ordinance format for our ordinances. Geo came back with a few suggestions that we've gone in and I've been looking at in regards to our zoning. And we did utilize some information from other cities who do zone differently than us. And once we have all the additional reviews, updates, it will then go to council. I don't know if council's noticed that we've, what we've been trying to do is send it to council first, allowing them at least a minimum of a week or more to make some suggestions, some edits, before we actually take it before the public for our first reading. This way, you not only have had all of the edits with the community or the committees, I apologize, the city staff with council, but then we've updated it one more time, and then we have a first reading. And necessary updates are addressed, and then we have the second reading. So we've tried to put in a pattern with our ordinances, unless they're simple ordinances, they're not like a huge change to them. But this one, of course, is completely new, so it's a big change. Otherwise, we try to get as much feedback from council as possible. So once we get the last of the edits in, it will go before first reading. And we can't promise the next meeting. We're hoping the first meeting in December. And we only have one meeting in December, so the second reading wouldn't be till January. TCQ inspection. I was lucky to receive a golden ticket. I call it the golden ticket because we had a landfill inspection on October 25th, 2022. So what they do is one of the TCQ inspectors from El Paso comes in. They actually inspect all of our records. We do have to maintain certain records, not only in accordance with our permit, but within regards to state law as well. So that's the training, that's the managing, that's disposing, that's the landfill cover. We actually have to cover our trash. Everything is documented. Any incidents that we have at the landfill have to be documented. I had a nice visit with TDS in regards to our documents and how we're going to ensure that we're up to date and on track of them moving forward. They have had some turnover within their own business, and so you can see that within our records. So we made little notes and we put some indications. Robert with TCQ didn't have a problem with it. He was glad that we noted what the concerns were. And after we review all the records, he makes all his notes, and then we actually get to go to the landfill. I was actually quite impressed. I don't make it a daily trip to go out there. But the times that I had been out there, it wasn't, believe it or not, it's hard to explain clean versus unclean. It just was a very dirty landfill. But upon the inspection of this current with TCQ, the landfill actually is quite clean. I know that's kind of odd to say. And it was easy to access the MSW versus the C and D. You could see where the waste is coming in from the tomato plant and how that fed off the side. There wasn't that like, it's hard to split it up, pile the trash everywhere. But they've obviously come back in after some of our conversations and hired and brought in some additional staff to keep the trash from blowing around, picking it up as it hits the fence line. They've also put in netting. And I want to say it's a mile high, but it's quite high. And so it's a netting section of the landfill, so as the wind blows, that's where the trash gets trapped, and it's not going on to other properties. And it was a very pleasant trip. You would never know it was a landfill. You didn't have the smells, the sounds, and all that, so I was quite impressed. Upon leaving, I made sure to get that golden ticket, and he laughed at me. It's really important that we get the documentation from TCQ on all of our inspections that says no violations. So he recorded no violations, which was wonderful to have and to hear. They do try to inspect us about every other year. He was thinking it may be every three years moving forward. But as of right now, we've been inspected 80, now 22. So it was a great end to my lunchtime with getting that golden ticket that says we weren't in any violations. And on the human resource side, I'm not going to present a detailed report as far as numbers and all that, but I did want to provide a brief update. And we've had a lot of positive response to some of the internal changes and procedures we've been making. We've had some turnover in HR itself, and of course, as that happens, bringing people in and making changes and building in also changes our procedures. Because we've become more proactive with our applications, trying to make sure we notify people in a more timely manner, following up with the application. In my notes, that was the hardest part that I noticed when I took over HR temporarily, was noticing that we're not, we don't have like a time period. And so making sure we keep up with that. People, when they apply, want the job that day, and that's the hardest part. So we've shortened our application process and made specific dates for when you can apply. We follow up. We have to do all of our due diligence on background checks. And so it's been, it's been really nice to see, and I say that because we've been interviewing every two to three weeks and not just one person. This week, I have six interviews scheduled for a variety of departments. Water's been very fortunate. They've had multiple applications come in. They have hired in the past since the last September 6th presentation, they've hired two positions. They have two and a half more applications, two interviews scheduled for this week. And we have an employee transferring into HR to relieve some of that for me so that they can keep up with the positive and moving forward. And we're reposting our job applications to make them more noticeable with the public. And I've started using our LinkedIn account, which has been interesting. For those of you who aren't aware, I'm not on social media for reasons. So getting that information out there has been kind of fun to get that interaction with other cities because they're all posting for jobs as well. And we don't post the job description, and we're trying to get every position have an actual posting. Advertiser benefits, advertise some of the responsibilities, some of the qualifications. You'll notice with some of our online, we're refreshing them this week. And we have actual pictures of our employees in the workforce. We have pictures of our guys in a hole for water. We have guys doing a new gas line. So you get that kind of familiar, like, hey, I know him, trying to entice people to come. And overall, in the past three weeks, I've received 14 applications. That which is a huge difference than it was two, three months ago. And it's been wonderful, except for when we make that phone call and they say, oh, I already got a new job. But we encourage that. We want people to be employed. So overall, just really impressed with how some of these internal changes have been benefiting the city. Can't prove 100%, but I feel like because we've decided to change things up, you can see more of that interaction with our public.
Megan, have we quit posting openings on our city website?
No. So what we've done, we've changed the format. We have posting dates. So a job position will be open for two weeks, and then it will come down for a week so that we can interview and that we can, we'll do the background interview on that. If we don't hire someone, then it goes back up. One of the things that I noted, and when I go to visit, is we've had streets and water posted, I think, for 10 years straight. I mean, so we're trying to like make it a little bit more of a variety. So when you go, it's like, oh, well, that's been up there this whole time. And we're doing that with all the positions. It also allows HR and even myself, the ability to go in, have the interviews, hire people, and then, okay, do we need another person? Or is the position filled? It allows for that one accountability, and two, it shows the public, these positions aren't just sitting there open. We are filling them. Sometimes we fill them, they don't last but a week or two months, and then we have to reapply, but we are filling them. Thank you. So you'll never know when you go what's open.
So I have a question. So what they're doing is it's like a generic application. They just fill it in, and then when you interview them, you are thinking of the slot that you want to put them in?
No.
Okay.
So that was a concept that was used once before. And we felt, a lot of us who are still currently employed, felt it wasn't beneficial. They apply for what they want, and we interview them for what they want. And the reason being is, for a few years, we would interview people and put them in a position that was open. So we had employees who didn't last because it wasn't what they, I wanted part-time, and they put me in full-time streets. Or I really wanted to work for the water, but I'm at the gas. So we wanted to come back. When you apply for a job, you apply for what you really want. So if we have four applications but one position, we interview the four, we hire one. We then do a follow-up phone call saying that the position has been filled, but these are other opportunities within the city. Would you like to apply? So we fill the customer, I'm sorry, administrative receptionist, had two other applicants that, you know, we interviewed that didn't qualify. And we called them up, and both of them applied for customer service. So we're giving them that opportunity as well. But we don't want to discourage someone. Well, if you apply, you may get put anywhere. We want someone to come in and actually have the job that they're seeking to have.
Thank you.
Next item. So on Friday, October 28th, we had a TNO region forum meeting. And I really wanted the public and the council to have a little recap. So the Texas Municipal League, we belong, that covers our insurance, workman's farm. It's a wide, a huge resource for the city, for everything. And we are part of Region 4, which is a huge area from basically El Paso all the way a little bit past Anderson up to Midland, Odessa. And on a quarterly basis, we meet to kind of discuss what's going on in our region. And I really wanted to take this opportunity because it can be a handful. It can be a lot of work. It is an expense. But it's a great opportunity for our city, one, to show off and brag about what we have to offer, two, to network with councils and other city managers and staff, and discuss what's going on in our region. A lot of times, what affects one city affects other cities, and it's nice to have that conversation with, oh, that happened to you. We're going through it right now. How did you handle it? And this region forum meeting was a little bit unique because Judy put it into a competition for Fort Stockton. And so there was a lot of pressure on how we performed. And but the wonderful side of it is, we had a pre-meeting to discuss healthcare in our region. And so Odessa and Midland are currently going through some, some big decisions and pushes and, you know, that political realm that comes into it, and they wanted to kind of say, hey, this month is only going to affect us, but the trickle-down could affect all of West Texas. Being the main topic, of course, is creating an emergency, or no, a new hospital district, reducing hospitals, mental health. So they brought in the attorneys to have just a little conversation. This is what's going on. They're going to spearhead a new committee. Judy Stokes volunteered to be on that committee so that we can also be informed on how the bigger cities that we rely on, we send our patients to Big Springs, or Big Springs for mental health. A lot of our patients get airlifted out to Odessa and Midland. How all of their change is going to affect us? And so it's really important for us to actually be able to be the city that hosts that and to be the initial impact forum. The other big thing is we brought in a great motivational speaker so that we can energize all of our communities. And as a result, part of the organizations and everyone collaborating is, you know, recognizing our communities at a region level and what we've done and how we've accomplished it just for our region. I also had a great discussion with another council member out of Martha. How can the mayors and city managers collaborate as a region? How do we get together, even if it's not just Region 4, but maybe they're a tri-county area? So a lot of information came from this meeting, and this meeting moves all over our region. So every quarter, it's located somewhere different. But I also wanted to take the opportunity to truly thank our staff. In light of it being the year-end for the fiscal, the new fiscal year, having completely new team meeting members, we rocked it. I left feeling more energized and proud of the city of Alpine and our staff than I ever have. They did an excellent job. We kept it simple. We kept it, you know, used spice wood. We used that view. Every city took a picture with all of the representatives of that view. Judy Stokes did a wonderful job with getting the door prizes. I think everyone next, at the next meeting is like, oh, we got to do better than, than Alpine. Jerry Johnson was there. Martine Sambatte was there. The mayor was there. They all interacted. They all had a lot of fun. Of course, our city attorney was there and our staff alone. Everyone had a great time. I just really wanted to brag about Alpine. And we've had our ups and downs, but this was a real good meeting for all of our regions and see that we are succeeding. And moving on, our FEMA grant for generators. So last year, we submitted, after council approved, a grant for generators to be put into our well fills. And we utilized the fact that in February of '21, we were very lucky to receive two generators out of Pecos to keep our water system running, so we didn't have to send out a boil notice. And we are one of few communities that had that support, which was awesome. So when this grant came up, of course, we jumped on the opportunity. Council had already approved setting some money aside for generators. Never know how much something costs until you ask the right price. And in order to run our well fills at the level they need to be, it was about 800,000. So that was a little sticker shock. And this FEMA grant came up and we applied. The first hurdle was the documentation. When did you lose? The first hurdle was the documentation. When did you lose power? What event happened? What storm? Where did you get the generators? Did you need generators? Can you tell us exactly when the power went out? How long it was down? Who had it? Who didn't have it? For multiple events. Everyone here knows we've had multiple events. Documentation is not something we ever thought we should keep. So Marcy and I jumped on and we contacted A E P. We contacted the Rio Grande Electric. We're calling T D M. We're looking in. Weather bug. We're looking at anything possible to find the weather event that we know have occurred that we didn't have the documentation. After multiple attempts to send in all of the documentation they requested. Marcy and I stepped aside thinking we're not gonna get it. It's done. We're okay with it. We tried. Well, on October twenty sixth, I received the, received the congratulations. You've passed the first step. The first step, which was pretty big step. And so we're now under FEMA review. So we passed the state level and they sent our grant to FEMA. With, of course, the catch that we may require additional information. So Marcy and I are kind of like, okay, we're excited. We may get this funding, but let's start working on the additional information. Um, the grant total that was proposed in the letter was five hundred and sixty-seven thousand eighty-four dollars. Um, we have the city's portion. We don't have to worry about trying to find that money. It is set aside. It doesn't provide for the full um, aspect of the grant. But it provides enough that if we had a number, another February twenty twenty-one, we would be fine. So we're really excited to get that information. I wanted to share it not only with council, but with the public as well. Um, Marcy does a lot of work with our grants and sometimes, you know, we forget to give her that thank you, because it's not always easy to find them. And in Alpine, not always easy to find the documentation. Um, another positive that came in, um, last week, Daryl and I had the privilege of sitting down with A E COM. It is an engineering company that the Rio Grande Council of Government had hired. To assist with the twenty twenty-one regional flood plan for the, uh, our region. We're considered Region E. Um, as part of the plan, they came up with, and I apologize, they don't have all the acronyms listed out what they mean. Because for Alpine, the big comeback was flood management evaluation. So as part of the flood plan, they showed up F M Es, F M Ss. And F M Ps, ones like a strategic and ones a plan, flood management strategies, flood management plan. Um, but the important part of these is if our regional flood plan. Has F M Es enlisted in there for the different cities. Then we automatically have a step in to get funding from the Texas Water Development Board. This could be in a, in a grant, or this could be in a loan, but we're already in the door. We're not having to jump through a hoop or come up with something because we're already part of a huge regional plan. So for twenty twenty-one, um, A E COM has finished the regional uh, water plan or flood plan. And came back with Alpine being one of the top ten to apply for, or to. Finish an F M E, which is a flood management evaluation. We have several things that we discussed. Um, the big issue we discussed, of course, is flooding. Um, it was noted in our F M Es and in our discussion, our flood map hasn't been updated since nineteen ninety. And so the F M E kind of starts building up to get to the F M S, which is the strategy side that gets you to the plan to get a new flood map. So the preliminary conversation was, hey, we have thirty-five thousand set aside for Alpine. What can we do with it? This is what you guys kind of requested. This was the areas you saw needing improvements. Where can we? Take the scope smaller and focus on. So Daryl and I, after some discussion in the summer, we all have seen that rain come in and how it runs through our city fast and furious. What are our trouble areas? So we kind of, and they have our little flood map up and they show the different flood plains and how the water flows. And is it coming from Ranger Canyon, Moss Creek? Um, really informative, lot of information. And the first thing we think of is the north side. Right down here by the creek where you go brown and that, and then over on Peachtree, where it was just developed. Kind of below where the rain comes in. Um, so we had a conversation of if we focus specifically in one area. Ideally, they could do an evaluation and put a plan together to create a project for us to go out for funding. And one of the things we discussed, of course, is, is Alpine Creek. And how that water flows so fast and furious and how it erodes that dam. And it spills out. And how do we control that? And what can we do? This had actually been brought up with Eddie Mullinar and I. Um, during the summer, when we had residents, kind of, hey, I think I'm gonna lose my, my porch here because it's running right behind my house. And it's just, the bank is disappearing. So step one. As we, in order to save money and not take from that thirty-five thousand. We are going to collect as much data as possible to give to the Rio Grande Council of Governments and A E COM. To start focusing on our troubled areas. Able, this is why I need the rain data. Um, so we've got, thank God for social media. We have all of those Facebook postings where. There, you can see the rain running through um, country flood. You can see it running through the creek. You can see it running through the legion. It also gives us an idea of how high it is. Does it max out our, our creeks and that, or you know, is it below? So the first step is to collect all the information and then we'll follow up with them and have another discussion. But to me, this was a win because this is thirty-five thousand dollars, no match. Hey. We made a list, not necessarily the list we want to be on, but it's, it's, hey, we can address this with someone else's money. Let's do it. Start small and build up. Um, down the road, if we wanted to go out for additional funding, we're already in the door. We're not having to, to start all over. So it was really, really exciting to be able to be part of this. Step one, and then we'll start gathering that information. So I really wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. And then my last item. So as everyone knows, we've been doing the strategic sound town halls. I'm really excited. I had Marcy put, you know, buzzwords. So Marcy's been taking all of the information from the public and has been putting it into spreadsheets and categorizing it and breaking it down. Um, and I answered, just take the buzzwords, take the, the main words you keep seeing. Um, and she put together a word cloud. And what I love about this word cloud is the one word that stands out for me is repair. And that's where we are as a city. We are repairing. We are repairing each of our departments. We're repairing our employee structure. We're going in and we're making that difference in that change. And our community feels the same way. They're ready for the repairs. Um, I love that you have infrastructure and business and another big one that pops out is employees. We've talked about our employees. And now our community is behind helping and making those changes. So it's really exciting to see these words. Um, we know we have a long way to go, but we have a community and we have employees who are ready to do it. This is after two meetings. Um, I'm excited because, you know, when we first started this, my expectation was if one person shows up, I'm excited. One person. We've gone through budget meetings where no one has showed up. So if one person came to a town hall, that's a win. Between the two town halls, we've had over seventy people show up. I think that's awesome. No, it's not a huge part of our population, but that tells me that people care. You have people who want to make a change and they want to provide their, their input. Now, we hope that as we have the next four, we get more and more people. We're gonna have the same people come to all of them and we're okay with that as well. We want your information and we want your input. So I wanted to just give a brief little buzzwords. This is what your community is saying. Um, as we go into our next one, as the mayor mentioned, which is this Saturday, November fifth, um, at two P M at the Granada. So we're just hoping as we have them spread out, we have them in the day, we have them on the weekend, we have them at night, we have them at different locations. More and more people show up. So the path to success. We've got some input coming in and we're ready to make those repairs. And that is my report.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Megan?
Megan, with that regional flood plan work that A E COM's planning on doing, will that result in any kind of change to the flood maps? That people have to use when they build in the Alpine or Brewster County?
No. Um, that is a much bigger project. This is just a one to get us in the north. I asked the same questions. Is this when we were updating our map? No. I tried. But, so in order to update the map, we actually have to have projects and plans in second place within our region. And so the regional one has been presented. It is available on T C Q website and the Rio Grande Council of Government website as well. Um, they have, we're Region E. Um, so twenty twenty-one, um, is when they started the update. It has been filed. We can go and amend it until January of twenty-three, which is where the F M E comes in. We're an amendment to the original plan. And then if everything gets approved by the state, we can go into the project.
Do the Alpine FEMA flood maps old and not as late?
Nineteen ninety.
But this is a stepping stone to that eventually. Okay, good. They need to be updated, that's for sure.
Unless we want to just pay for it all ourselves.
Probably not. I don't even want to ask what the price tag would be. Okay, so moving on, the city staff update. Uh, first up, utilities report by Director of Utilities, Keith Seeger, come on up.
All right. Tonight, uh, I'm gonna give you a brief update on where we're at with the wastewater treatment plant repairs. Uh, what's going on, what's happened and unfortunately, what we're still waiting on. Just this economy nowadays and supply chain issues and getting contractors to work, it's just incredible. All right, so moving to the first slide. Um, after months of waiting and several delays, the electronic control panels for the new aerators finally arrived. We got them uncrated and looked at it and made sure they're in good shape. Uh, but again. The problem was we had to wait for the contractors to show up, come install it. And they. Had to make some changes to the original plans. Uh, they had anticipated reusing a lot of conduit for the project. But, uh, we're going Alpine. Once they got into it, found out a lot of that conduit was encased in cement underground, so. Hard to reuse that, so they had to put new conduit rerouted, so it created some delays. Next slide, please. Speaking of the conduit, there's the, the trench coming from the electric supply system. And our backup generator there, and that goes on up to the side of the wastewater treatment, uh, aeration ditch. And, uh, so all of the conduit and electrical and control cables have been run. Uh, we just need the electricity hooked up to the uh, control panels at the actual aerators. Uh, next slide, please. And there you can see on the trailer, the, one of the aerator blades and the gearboxes and stuff. So that's how big these aerator blades are. That'll be installed into the aeration ditch and we'll finally be back to having two in place, uh, which should. As, as we anticipate, give us enough uh, aeration capacity to lower our, you know, B O D and uh. Make sure that, uh, we can have a better effluent coming out of the plant. Next slide, please. All right, as you can see, these are some of the subcontractors with the, the scaffolding erecting and they are actually. Setting the base plate there. The actual first aerator has been installed along with the control box. But, uh, we haven't seen the contractor in a couple of weeks now. I've contacted the lead engineer who's responsible for overseeing this project and informed him of that, but. Um, we're just trying to get them. It has not been connected electrically yet, so I don't know if they're waiting for. For parts or, or something. I haven't heard why, but, uh, but as soon as they get that one operational, then we can take down the other one that's in use. The old one and then put the new one in and, and go from there. Next slide. I wanna take this opportunity to give a shout out to, um, to my team. There are some, uh, hardworking individuals and there's very few of them, so. They work a lot of weekends. In fact, they work most weekends because we have leaks pop up left and right everywhere around here. And, uh, as you can see, this is a Saturday. And, you know, they're out there on a Saturday giving up their weekends to try to keep city flowing and moving. It's not an easy job and they're, and they're doing the best they can with what they have and I appreciate them. So if you see them out there working, stop by and tell them so. All right, last slide. Uh, water report numbers. I was asked to supply from January to present. As Mr. Rick, uh, mentioned, in April, there was a large number of the unknown loss. And the, the difference between known and unknown loss, known loss means you know where the water went. Uh, you knew, you know, you could measure certain leaks or you knew somebody used this much and it didn't, you know, get billed or whatever. The, the production tells you how much we produced at the wells and then, of course, the consumption is what was billed by the city to customers. The unknown loss is the difference in those numbers. And given our layout, the way things are. Uh, if you look at January, you see it's about five million and then February, six million and then ten million. Obviously, there's a leak somewhere and it's, you know, almost impossible to find out here in this desert community. Uh, most of these leaks, we had in the month of April alone, we had five major leaks. And most of these were supplied line leaks from the wells. So it's not something that, you know, it's, it's not really fair to say we lost revenue because, you know, this wasn't bill, build water. This was. Water that was coming from a well. So that would mean the true way to measure that cost would be what it cost us to produce it. You know, not what we would charge someone for. Um, even at the worst month of April with the loss of twenty-four million. Uh, and of course, with our drought contingency plan, which was a voluntary measure, just the first step. I don't believe anybody was shut down or we shut anybody down. It was all voluntary. But, uh, those major leaks can sit out there in the field. And as dry as it was, goes underground and until it finally gets saturated enough that it comes above ground. And perhaps a ranch hand sees it. I mean, we could try to ride fence, so to speak. And, you know, it would take all month for the guy to run the circuit. We may never find the leak until it finally comes around. And then sometimes, especially with the smaller leaks, we have to let some of them go. Because I've got so many other projects I'm going, doing with three people. You know, every day it's kind of like a triage. I have to decide what priority this one gets today. Um, just the way it is. So that's why that number was so high. As you can see, after we got those leaks fixed, boom, dropped right back down. So. Uh, as we find them, we try to fix them. The next month is even less. Uh, so we're trying to stay on top of them. Uh, just some of them, just kind of overwhelmed with some days. And if you notice September, the discrepancy in the number was, it's minus six million. Um, in September, it wasn't till the end of the month and we noticed the total month readout was lower than the, the bill. We began to suspect that there was a meter on one of the wells that was acting up. And it finally, and it was, and it finally gave up the ghost in October. And so now we're trying to find a new eight-inch meter to replace that. So what basically is. Uh, we didn't build more than we pumped. We pumped it. It just didn't record that it was being pumped out from the wells. So as soon as we get, can find that meter and get it here, we'll get that installed and get that recorded back up again. So that's my, uh, presentation, council. Does, uh, anyone have any questions?
How much does a meter cost?
Uh, this particular special type of meter is gonna be in the proximity of four thousand dollars if we can find one.
So are they just?
Supply chain issues are just incredibly unbelievable right now. Um, I can call different. Suppliers and ask them and they'll say, yeah, but you've got a weekly time of two, three months or. And you try to get them a quote on a price and they say, well, we can only quote you this price today. You know, in the beginning, we used to be able to get thirty-day quotes on items. We used to be able to get, and then it's dropped down to ten-day quotes. Now, they won't even do that. They give you a quote the day you call and that's it. It is that tight out there. And it's not just us. It's all over the country. You know, all those, especially, uh, a lot of these parts, you know, castings and things come from China and it's just dried up. A lot of them come from overseas, not even just China, but overseas. And it is tight. It's hard to get parts. So.
Okay, and did I hear correctly that we can't finish the project that you were originally talking about?
we can't finish the project that you were originally talking about because the contractor, we can't get a hold of them anymore?
Um.
They're kind of missing in action?
Well, I have one kind, I have one project, yes, uh, sewer main project that we originally were giving a bid to a word of the contract to, and, uh, they basically ghosted us, they just quit replying to phone calls from Johnny and I and, and emails, and so I've reached out to several other contractors, and I can't get anyone interested in coming to, to work on our bids, it's just that the industry is just in a terrible state right now. I mean, and I don't know if it's just that they're in the same boat, they have a hard time getting employees or, you know, finding qualified people, or, I mean, it's just so much work out there in the infrastructure. We're not the only city with infrastructure issues, and they've, you know, contractors have their pick of, you know, choice right now where they want to work and how much they want to get paid. So it's, it's, like you said, this entire industry is tough right now. So we're just keep doing the best we can with what we have.
I have a question for you, sir. Is there any way to know with the leaks what particular well, water line might be affected, or is it such a cumulative number that it's difficult to specifically say well number three in Muske's? That pipeline seems to be the one that we have the leaks on.
It depends on the well, uh, Councilman, uh, Johnson. If it's, some of our wells, most of, a lot of our wells work, you know, on a as-needed basis, they're on and off to fill tanks to certain thing. Those types of wells are hard to find leaks because, you know, you fill here and you stop here, you don't necessarily know the problem, but the few that we have, like Seattle Sunnyland, that, uh, are in continuous use because we need the water from that supply. It's a little easier to detect there's something going on because you know, it's not, not quite keeping up with the tank, and, you know, we're pumping as much as we can. That makes it a little easier to be suspicious, but again, you still have to find it. You know, until that comes above surface where you can find it. And if someone sees it, I mean, we've got miles of pipeline out there coming from wells, and you've been out there, and it's just going through the desert. I mean, ranch land, you know.
I've ridden a lot of water lines.
So if you understand what I'm talking about, and until it comes topside or somebody, and somebody sees it, then it's, it's hard to figure out where it's leaking at.
Those are the nice cottonwood growing.
Yeah, sometimes you get some, you know, and those are, those are usually the little ones, you know, we start seeing a little green up or something like that, but uh, when you see the leaks that we get, that, you know, you know, once they come up, up top, they'll be pretty evident because it'll be running down the road.
Well, I appreciate the report, you're welcome. Very informative.
Keith, I have a question.
Yes.
With the state or our infrastructure and the amount of leaks that Alpine has had for years and years on end, would you say that the loss of water production is something that has been happening, it's just something that is just being brought to our attention? Is it possible?
Well, again, uh, I'm, would be remiss if I tried to tell you what happened before I got here because I really can't tell you. I am sure there's, there's been issues with the infrastructure in the past, I'm sure there's been water leaks in the past, I mean, uh, again, this weekend, we had a sewer uh, line collapse that we had to go work on, the crew had to work on, and it's, uh, was orange bird pipe, and that's from rural or two, and that's just tar paper wrapped really tight, you know, and sealed with tar to make a pipe back when they were showing on steel. I mean, our system is just a hodgepodge of different materials, we've got asbestos concrete, we've got, uh, C nine hundred PVC, uh, orange bird, I mean, uh, I don't think we found any wooden pipes yet, but there may even be some of those.
That's why I feel that maybe this is just something that has been happening because of the state of the
It probably has, but I can't tell you for certain because I can only tell you from, from my perspective from when I joined here.
Well, I do know that your department is very well-run, and like you say, the guys are out there time and time again. And I don't want them to feel that the questions coming up is anything that could cause anybody's, anybody's fault.
No, that's, we're here to answer questions, we're here to, like you said, we try to do the best what we have, I mean, everybody does, every department does, I mean, that's just part and parcel. But, uh, it's, it's, it's a tough industry, uh, and it's very visible, and it's one that people notice, especially if they can't flush their toilet or or something happens and the water's running down the road, so I understand it, we, and we try to get it to it, but like I said, some days I have to literally decide which project we're going to work on for the day, which one became more important.
So thank you for the report, your hard work.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, up next, municipal court update by the Honorable Judge Valenzuela and Court Clerk Ms. Linda Stewart.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council, um. So far, we've gotten, uh, some pretty good response from our citations and, and, uh, and then we've had, uh, a port standing for some of the citizens and people who have gotten the, uh, the, uh, tickets that, that they were issued. Uh, we're still working on, on a, a few different ways to, to contact all the, uh, the, um, the offenders, and, um, we're still coming up with some new ideas to try and get our, our collections in, uh, we've got an excellent city attorney, we've got a tremendous chief of police and, uh, all of, all of his staff, and they, they really work hard. Um, I've asked Captain LaSoy for, I think I left a message about, uh, asking some of the, uh, the staff to give us a more than one contact point when they get a citation, and we get a, you get a citation, it's their name, address, phone number, and sometimes the phone numbers are either gone, or I, I'd like to have a second number, possibly an email, because not everybody checks their, their, their cell phones, maybe two or three days later. And I'm surprised that some of them haven't called our office and say, hey, I got, I need to take care of this, so we have an email, we're going to send them out. Uh, other than that, if they don't respond, then we, we do what is an FTA failure to appear. That's a, a certain charge, and then after they've done the second one, then we do a, uh, bench warrant, and we go knock on their door and say, hey, need to come down to court. Uh, a lot of people don't like that, right, we come, we got a, uh, a roundup coming up in, uh, this January, yeah, and so I have an excellent, excellent court clerk, Linda Stewart, and she's doing, she works real hard, and she's got everything, uh, in, in a concise order, and so she's going to be able to, uh, be a, a real instrumental part of the, the roundup and everything else. She's going to present a, um, PowerPoint, I don't want to take all of, all of the, what she's going to tell you already, so after we've finished, if you have any questions from the council or from the audience, try and answer as best as we can. Linda Stewart.
Thank you, Janet. Hello, everybody.
Hello. I'm just going to give you, um, a report from July twenty-second to September twenty-second. I came on board in March, and we had, uh, the previous judge a couple of times. And then in May, which was her last month of her tenure, she didn't come at all. So that kind of pushed our docket way back. And then we got this great guy in June, and we had our first court date in August. So we were backed up a little bit, um, so I'm going from July twenty-second through September twenty-second. Uh, as you can see on the screen, the court, uh, revenue in July, there's city and then state. City of, I'm not going to read it, I think you can read it. It's, the state takes a lot, so if you go to the next slide, the distribution, we retained twenty-four thousand out of forty-three, eight sixty-three, forty-three, and then they got forty-five percent of that amount, so the state takes quite a bit of what we bring in. Then if you skip to the next page, on the July through September, the cases in court, July, we had seven hundred and ninety-six, sixty-one that we were disposed of, meaning that they came to court and either had, uh, pre-trial dispositions or deferrals, or they were dismissed. August and eight oh seven versus seventy-nine, September eight oh one versus fifty-seven. So that's how many, um, in the active cases are actually on the books for those months. Then if you go to the next page for July through September dismissals, um, and it breaks down pre-trial fifty-five in July to two dismissals that were actually on the books. And then dispositions at trial, obviously, we didn't have any in July because we didn't have any. And if you go to from August, it picks up more, and then in September, we have forty-six pre-trial, um, three dismissals for compliance in court, and then one disposition.
What exactly is a compliance dismissal?
That's, um, well, for instance, administratively, like if they get stopped for like a failure to maintain financial responsibility, which is insurance. If they bring in proof that they had insurance, and we can drop that down to an administrative, so we'd be dismissed, but administratively. So, um, and then that goes for some other things too, like animal citations, or even, we've had building code now, where those are picking up quite a bit. And sometimes, you know, I'll get it, set it up for court, and then the building code official will come in and say, oh, they fixed it, so let's just take that off the books. So it could be some of those items as well.
Thank you.
And then, um, the last page is just about our progress and our changes. Um, as we had someone mention earlier, we went through and purged from February of two thousand fourteen through January of two thousand nineteen, her standing order dated in June, and that, those were, um, statute of limitations is two years. So a lot of those just had not been taken. So I went through literally, um, literally, um, and it was good that we had that free time with no judge because I was able to do this.
So when you set the trial, the trial docket, do you start with the oldest ones? I mean, are those the ones that are?
Yeah, we have flags in our system that are date uh, projected, like alerts, and I go in and look at the alerts, and I physically go through the files. And if there's not a docket sheet or some form of pre, uh, installment agreement order or community service, then they get pulled out and added to the next docket. So, um, anyway, we got rid of a lot. Uh, where I'm going through, and I've noticed this, and I, I know we've had a lot of turnover in the municipal court before I came on board. There were hardly any notations in the case court notes. Now, I am a fanatic, but I don't like writing, and a lot of stuff is so redundant, I've made little stickers for my notes. And I just add pertinent dates and numbers to help make that more efficient because it's a lot of work. And after, uh, now we have regular court dates. We're trying to do them, um, first and third, is that right, first and third? Third states? Sometimes it may vary, in November, we're only going to have one court date because of the holidays. In December, we're going to have two back-to-back so we can make up for, for not having as many in November. The warrant, um, oh, we had one emergency hearing, and it was an animal controlled dog bite. The dog was euthanized for killing another dog. So that was sad. Our next word roundup is in January, the one that we had in September was a big success as far as getting revenues in prior to the court date. We got, uh, five thousand four hundred and ten dollars and seven cents in because of a Facebook that Officer Philip had put on, and then the ad in the paper, and we really got response. Usually my court notes from a court date are three quarters of a page maybe, this time it was three pages of people that showed up either via Zoom or they were brought in here, and I think there were about ten that were actually arrested that day that came in. And then I guess the last item is Judge and I both attended training in July for the judges, for the clerk of weeks training, and I'm going to be taking, um, the clerk one certification, hopefully sometime in the spring. Do you have any questions?
Well, I think you've taken a big mess and made it into something worse.
I'm trying, but I like to work, so.
Well, good.
Yeah, yeah, Catherine Stokes, I'd like to make a couple of comments here because I've been through several permutations of the Alpine Municipal Court during my tenure as Alpine City Attorney. And I can tell you that under the leadership of, uh, the judge here and the clerk here, they, they finally got a good system going, they're being very professional, they're doing it according to statewide standards. But the best part about it is that it's, it's, it's working, and so the fact that we have court twice a month, the fact that we get notices out to people, the fact that we have warrant roundups every three months is is making everybody realize that the Alpine Municipal Court is a court, and you have to respect it, that they come in, they pay their fee, their fines, or they come in to court if they want to talk about something, but it's, it's, it's working, and the the, the fact that we work well like that, I think is good for the citizens because they realize that we're not just picking on, that we have a process and a system, and that they can be heard if they want to do that, but uh, my kudos go to, to these people for doing a good job.
Thank you. Oh, today, we got, we, I collected nine hundred and twenty-three dollars in cash, it's today, so it is picking up, so.
They don't want to go to jail.
Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you. Good incentive.
Very good.
Pardon me, council, but I have to go somewhere.
Okay, all right, thank you, Judge.
Sorry to bug out on you.
It's okay, thank you, thank you for all your hard work. Okay, moving on to public hearings, I'm going to remind everyone that the city council can't respond, and they just, we can listen. So the first public hearing, city manager?
Public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments on the second and final reading of ordinance twenty-two twenty-two dash oh nine dash oh two in ordinance establishing chapter sixteen, boards, commissions, and committees, the Alpine Code of Ordinances, amending processes, procedures, guidelines, and requirements for city boards, commissions, and committees.
Okay, do we have anyone here to speak? Okay, Mr. Stevens, come on up.
So, Rick Stevens, Ward five, it's been difficult to follow the bouncing ball on the airport advisory board, or whatever one wants to call it, at one time, the airport review board, uh, or the Alpine Review Board, uh, there was a time when many people filled this audience here and said, hey, we really do need the airport advisory board. Uh, then apparently at the last reading, when the first reading occurred, I was away on travel. A comment was made that only one person out of the twelve who had submitted applications were qualified to serve on the board. I'd point out that, uh, the over forty-five, uh, hangars that are out at the Alpine Airport, the majority of them are not owned by residents of the city of Alpine. I thought there was wisdom in being able to say, they are property owners, they've, uh, voted Brewster County, uh, and those would be the criteria because you really do want to have people involved in airports. Uh, thus far, uh, if the city council does away with the airport advisory board, you miss out on opportunities to be able to go get funding, to be able to support it, you miss out on the people who actually have expertise. Uh, and so it's, uh, it's astounding to me, but of the twelve applicants that have been statement was made, there's only one individual qualified. I know that this particular council doesn't care for me to be on any boards, because I volunteered to be on boards before, and I was flatly denied, but I would suggest there are some very qualified people to maintain an airport. If you look at the tax revenue, and people wanted to make investments, they bring in tax dollars, uh, they bring in revenue to the city and getting people on the board, including those who can be involved with national organizations, whether it's EEA, which is the Experimental Aircraft Association, or the Owners and, uh, and a Pilots Association and National Order, they want people involved, who are involved with the Alpine Airport Echo thirty-eight. They want people involved who are involved with the Alpine Airport Echo thirty-eight. Give them advice and perspectives and be able to bring funding to Alpine. I think doing away with the airport advisory board would be short sighted. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else here to speak?
Jim Street, Ward one, I'm kind of a broken record, calling him Miss Topless and and Council Stevens. Kind of want to make a couple of points. I was told that, well, we can't, nobody will volunteer, so we got a council board. It's not up to the people to volunteer for this event. When Rick appointed us to the Transportation Committee, he didn't ask, would you like to serve? He said, I've appointed you and John Kennedy to the Transportation Board. Unfortunately, that never went anywhere. And I think we also need a Transportation Committee. But it's, and to follow on what what Rick just said, when I was chairman of the Airport Board in Terrell County. We got, we got involved in both the master plan for the airport and a runway overlay and helped the commissioner, they don't have a city. Help the commissioners get those projects underway and we contacted this John Landgrau. Who helped steer us through some of these things. So there are people who are qualified to serve and are willing, able to serve. So call on us, don't ask us to call on you.
Is anyone else here to speak? I've seen that, moving on. To the consent agenda, city secretary.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's consent agenda contains four items. Item one, approval of October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting minutes. Item two, approval of the excused absence of Council Rodriguez from the October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, regular city council meeting. Item three, approval of the updated fiscal year twenty twenty-three city council meeting calendar. And item four, approval of short-term rental special use permit for three oh eight North Tenth Street. The record property owners are Adam Gaber and Elizabeth Harvey.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion?
I make a motion, accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, I need a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, approved unanimously, consent agenda. Okay, so information or discussion items, we have a parks and recreation board update by Chair of the Board Darren Nance. Come on up, Darren.
I'm going, Mayor and Council.
Good, how are you?
Good. I think it's been about four months since I spoke last. I was just going to kind of catch all up on the events of what the board's done. And stop me anytime you guys want to if you have a question about any of this.
Thank you.
First part, I was going to let you know, September twenty-first, we had the vehicle head and vote against any changes to allowing alcohol in the parks. Presenting an ordinance up to make that decision. We did have two workshops on that, one public work, two public workshops, one that was just the workshop and the other one was before a meeting. And I want to say it was pretty much overwhelmingly may to actually allowing alcohol in the parks. We did have a survey as well that was done through the city. And on that, I think we had about a hundred thirty-five-ish responses and that was about seventy-five percent that said yes to the alcohol. But there was also a petition presented of about a hundred people that said no. So I think if you took everyone in, it was about a fifty-fifty issue. Which it was. What else did we do on that one? We did look at that, we kind of compared that to Waco, Port Stockton, Appling, some other municipalities that do allow alcohol in certain circumstances. And the one thing I did like about viewing some of those others and the board as well. Is they would typically just say all alcohol is banned except under these circumstances. I kind of like that blanket statement of no alcohol except under these circumstances. That was pretty much the generically language we actually saw when we did see that for the municipalities. Currently, our ordinance states alcohol is not allowed in Coconut Parks and Centennial, Medina and the pool. And I think we're going to be working on kind of clarifying some of that language to. That may just be an outright ban saying it's banned in all circumstances. Once we look at the language of what you guys would prefer. The next thing we had was park prioritization and maintenance, the next task that we've been directed towards. That one, a couple of things I was going to mention was. The board, through our discussions over the last probably six months on this, has had a preference to kind of keep parks. The parks that are the largest are the most well-maintained and well-used coconut centennial, those parks. So they already require the majority of the maintenance, but they're also the ones that most people use. So even if we were to curtail any parks or remove parks from anything, then we're basically removing very little maintenance from the park squad. Because Nopalitos or Arbelito, some of the other parks are very small and don't require near as much maintenance. One thing we did kind of look at is options to lower maintenance and labor cost is. Maybe coming up with, when we looked at some larger cities and what they do, and we're not really mentioning this for Alpine. But what some of the other parks and recreation boards do will have design specifications. So a perfect example would be with the park, Pueblo and Oavo over there. Having a landscape architect do some of that stuff and the design specs would be in. We looked at Dallas, El Paso, El Paso is probably the closest thing to what we are, but if you had a park path. They, you know, you put rebar on the bottom and you have five inches of concrete on there. And land is land that, you know, to keep the shifting of it. If you've been in Marfa, you know that I think they have some, they have a walk path kind of out there towards one, one of the parks out there. And it's a lot of asphalt, but it was kind of dumped on the side into a running path. So I think having design specifications would be really, really good to, you know, help lower maintenance and. But it should last a long, long time. So we kind of looked at some of that. Other one was creating, this is something El Paso does, have a native plant list. So right now, I think we've kind of just allowed most plants, you know, that we've chosen the Parks Department to kind of choose to have out there. If we cure a native plant list, then these are going to be low maintenance plants that don't require near the watering or anything else for our area. So Adalina was kind of looking at, we'll do it. Couple other things in there. One would be large capital projects. Did a little research on site-wide irrigation systems. What that is, is. El Paso and their design specifications, if they're going to put a new park in, they require it to work with their rainbird irrigation system that they already have. So once you implement something like that, then the other parks can follow suit and you kind of have one system to load the maintenance for everyone. Saying that, it's pretty fancy what they actually do. I was listening to the water sensors and everything, they're on leaks. Now, when you actually have systems, they'll have sensors in some of the water systems there. And it will email alerts to you if it does find leakage by doing volume measurements for the water and everything else. So there's a lot of really interesting IOT internet of things out there. And the last one would be public and community partnerships such as Adopt a Tree. We did look at some statistics, kind of comparing us to, there's, I think, NARP. So we were comparing our park system and the amount of money that is dedicated towards it to other municipalities, twenty thousand people or less. And don't really have all the data on that, but kind of the generic makeup of it is Alpine has a lot of parks. But we have about the same acreage as a lot of other municipalities out there. Ours is strange because two-thirds of the acreage is actually coconut. So that's just, we have one big park and a lot of small parks. And even kind of just talking to Robert a little bit, asking what his major maintenance and time sucks are in, you know, maintaining the park systems. He said mowing and weeding. I was surprised he said weeding is the main thing that requires a lot of their maintenance and time. Next thing was that will be tasked with is rental fees for city park assets such as Coconut Pavilion. We are starting to look at other municipalities in Texas and compare what we charge to other areas in Texas. Currently, we charge twenty-five dollars per day for using the Coconut Pavilion. We've started discussing maybe splitting that into an AMPM or, you know, other options in there, but it's twenty-five per day. There are charges for the rental fee for the civic center and city poll fees as well. So that's kind of in the Parks Department for the budget. That's where the revenue comes in for parks. Other opportunities that other cities in Texas do is having lease facility lease agreements for baseball, little leagues, things like that. Where the little leagues will sign an agreement in with the city so that they do, they'll either come cover some of the cost or the maintenance on that, whether through labor or other items. So that's an interesting section and really it's kind of just open to looking at other ways to possibly find other revenue generation for the park system. And the last thing we had was just going to update you guys on the dog shade park structure. That is, we've received quotes from local companies here and the sixteen foot by forty-two foot, which would cover the big dog and small dog section. Would run about thirty-five hundred, four thousand dollars for the entire shade structure. And next we'll be moving forward, we need to discuss with Janine Bishop at the Alpine Humane Society, some fundraising options. Verify structure design with City of Alpine so that they are happy with the way you end the look. And then discuss also with the Boag Department at Alpine ISD because that program will be doing the labor. And that is everything we've really had. Last thing I was just going to say is this Saturday, we're going to do a tree trimming. Adalina Bill is going to be doing a tree trimming downtown. I'm excited about that because spruce up downtown a little bit. Last time we did that last year, the businesses were excited.
Nine twelve and you meet at the rebel.
And then you go to town hall at two.
I was going to see if there's any questions.
You know, I think it's a good idea. When those kids try to go play soccer, the little soccer and now in the back of the softball field. But that cost would have to roll over to the kids and they're already paying an exorbitant amount.
They do already pay for the little league fees and everything else. And when you look at it and you view some facility lease agreements, so it'll be liability charges and things like that. Or it's, you know, it's an issue you see through other parts of the state of Texas on a public field, you know, paid for by public tax dollars. Being utilized by a little league and then how is that compromise made? All right.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to action items. Action item number one, city manager.
Approved the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten dash oh-three. An ordinance establishing chapter sixteen boards, commissions and committees. To the Alpine Code of Ordinances, amending process, procedures, guidelines and requirements for city boards, commissions and committees. And this has been before councils since January of twenty twenty-two. It's gone back and forth gathering input, not only from the public, but from the council as well. There've been different versions of it. The idea was to consolidate, to make it a little bit more uniformed with all of the boards and commissions. Instead of having so many discrepancies. At the last council meeting, it was amended to remove the airport board, previously known as the Alpine Advisory Board. And the Transportation Board is also removed. It is now before council for final approval.
Okay, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion now. I'd like to approve the second file reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten dash.
Okay, I need a second. Okay, discussion.
I must say that I was a little shocked to see the video and see that the airport advisory board and transportation had been removed. Especially since Counselor Johnson tabled that. Due to the feedback that the public had been giving, given, giving counsel. And then came right back and voted to delete it, going against the majority feedback of what people have said. A few things that have been brought up was one on the Transportation Board was that it had not met, it was not being utilized. It sat there, it did not meet for years. That really can be blamed on the board itself. I think that falls on council or tasks given to the Transportation Board. I mean, that falls on us. Right now, we are setting up ordinances to detail the tasks that we want from these boards. If that hadn't been done with these other boards, and that might be one of the reasons why they were not meeting, they were not tasked to do anything in general. Another thing that was being brought up is that they weren't coming up and reporting. Well, they cannot ask to be put on the agenda. Unfortunately, that falls upon council. The city manager or the city secretary. So with that being said, they do not make the choice of coming up and reporting to us. Another thing that I'm going to ask Counselor Stokes is, you made the remark that. There were no applicants that met our standards. Yes, ma'am, you did. I watched it and when you were on there, you said there were twelve.
When we changed this. We were going to have. Ward one, we'll have a, have a, I have a member, ward two, ward three, ward four, ward five. We had, we had nine applicants. Who did not live in the city, part of them didn't, weren't even registered to vote in Brewster County, much less the city. That's what we're trying to get back. This is a city airport and it needs to be run by city citizens. I understand these people on property here, they don't live here. And we currently have one member on there. And I've never seen a report from them since I've been here. So previous councils obviously weren't asking them to come report either.
Exactly. So why are we holding the?
I don't think it's needed. I said in the beginning, I've said this for two months. We aren't getting reports, we aren't getting anything from them. If we feel like in six months, we need to readdress it, just like I told the Transportation Board, we'll readdress it. That's my opinion.
Okay, I just, like I said, felt that, yes, I did watch the the video and you did say that it did not meet our standards. I want those twelve applicants to know that as council. I'm not sure what those standards were.
They're in the ordinances, you need to read the ordinances. Then they're in a problem with any of them.
As far as telling our, some of these people that want to sit on the boards that. They don't, they don't have property here or they don't, they're, some of these, even though they do not live in the city. They do not live within the city limits. They do hold property here in the city.
I understand that.
And I for one feel that they have done a big service to the airport. As council members, it is not our job to sit up here and 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 just go with what we believe. It's to listen to our constituents, to listen to the, to the citizens of the city of Alpine and vote accordingly. There has been a wide number of people that have come and given specific reasons as to why they feel the airport board needs to consider. I want you to know that I for one have listened. I am not in favor of putting this out. But as you all know, I am only one vote. Historically, you have seen what has happened. So I do want you to know that I do hear. Unfortunately, the rest of council is not listening.
Any other discussion? Gio, does the ordinance currently say that you have to live within the city of Alpine? Or was it just a Brewster? I thought I read that it can be anybody in Brewster County.
The way that it's currently written, it can be county resident.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, the ordinance or action item number one passes with three to win.
Just to confirm, you voted against, right?
All right, so action item number two, city manager.
Approved resolution twenty twenty-two dash eleven dash oh-one. A resolution approving the directive tasking the Animal Advisory Board with key objectives for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. And one of the things that we started last fiscal year with an agreeance with the city council was to provide the guidance. As Counsel Rodriguez had mentioned, directing them to do things like, how are you going to advise us? Gio sent out an email requesting all of your ideas for each of the active boards so that we could put them in a resolution. Giving them some guidance on what you want to see moving forward within each of these boards. For instance, in the Animal Advisory Board, an ongoing update of the ordinances. Our Alpine Animal Board does a great job with keeping up with the state law and making sure that our ordinances reflect correctly with the state law. Of course, public service announcements, donation through our utility billing, registration and lease compliance. He took all of your information or your thoughts and ideas and put it in a resolution to direct that to our board.
Okay, I need a motion.
I'm in the motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash eleven dash zero one.
Okay, I need a second. Discussion. Okay, let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, action item number two is approved unanimously. All right, action item number three, city manager.
Approved resolution twenty twenty-two dash eleven dash oh-two. A resolution approving a directive tasking the planning and zoning commission with key objectives for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. This is them along lines with the Animal Advisory Board as well. Providing the planning and zoning committee some direction on what we'd like to see them work on. Some of the items that were brought back to city staff was a zoning map, ordinance review. Around two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, there was a lot of discussion with the historic district of Alpine. That has been put back before the Alpine and zoning as a directive. One of the things that was also added was controlled growth of stores deemed. Thank you. To small economies. So these are some of the items that are being brought before council to give them to find zoning to complete.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash eleven dash oh-two.
Okay, I need a second. Okay, discussion. Alright, C nine, let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, action item number three is approved unanimously. Moving on to action item number four, City Manager.
Approved resolution twenty twenty-two dash eleven dash oh three. A resolution approving a directive tasking the parks and recreation board with key objectives for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. This is the second directive for the parks board. Um this includes items with ordinance review, it's a continuation. Um park rules, making sure our parks are uniform with what you can and can't do within them. Um continuation of festivities and event permitting and of course rental fees. These are some of the items that council came back and asked.
I need a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash eleven dash oh three.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll say.
Discussion. Okay, C nine, let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, action item number four is approved unanimously. Action item number five, City Manager.
Approved resolution twenty twenty-two dash eleven dash oh four. A resolution adopting a new rental agreement and updated fee schedule for the Alpine Civic Center. Um historically, the rental fees for the Civic Center were adopted by ordinance. Um the last time this was adopted or changed, um council approved to do these by resolution. Over the past year and a half, we've had certain incident instances come up in regards to our rental fees, our structure. What do we charge if we don't do something, if we do something, if we damage something? We wanted to put a little bit more clarity to it. Gio and his team um went through and updated the uh fees. And also provided a new format to the actual application. Some of the fees that were included, believe it or not, um we've had where the doors have been left unlocked. Um which leaves the building open to anyone who wishes to come in. Um lights and AC being left on, the heater being left on. Another big one that was added was alcohol penalty charge. And you can have alcohol within the civic center for your events, but there are guidelines and procedures to follow. Um one, it is a safety issue and two, we do have to be notified of the event, having alcohol. Um we've had one event that chose not to provide any notification. Um as a result, we are including a penalty for that. So the fees are being updated accordingly. We are not actually changing or recommending any of the rental fees for nonprofit government. Um just a regular citizen to be changed.
Okay, alright, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash eleven dash zero four.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Discussion. C nine, let's vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Action item number five passes unanimously. Okay, alright, so city council member comments. We're gonna change it up just a little bit tonight. After our discussion after the last meeting. So Councilmember Johnson.
Well, I really don't have a whole lot to say. I'm sure Judy will substage me. I do appreciate all the work that they, you know, and the other department heads put in and the meeting is reflected. The effort that is done and the effort that the council does to review our books each uh meeting time and. Actually seek out information and make good policy decisions for the future of our city.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sandante.
Like Gary said, thank you Megan and Gio for the planning of the meeting. Good door prices, even though I've been away anything.
Me either. Okay.
I'll share mine with you.
Councilmember Rodriguez. Councilmember Stokes.
I'd like to thank Keith and his team. They're always out there doing a good job. He's right. Each time there's water in the streets, that's what everybody's interested in. Gilbert, Linda and Ron for. Attempting to get all these tanks is just a show of show and they keep on talking about it. All the city staff of the KNL, it was great, everything was good. Uh and Marcy forgetting some gym generators and working on those grants. We really need that.
That was it.
I want to make one more comment to Keith. Um it was kind of my idea to have a uh consumption and usage and sale, et cetera, for the water. We did it when I was president of the gas board and Randy's doing it now again. And I think it was a fantastic report and would certainly guide us into the future with water usage in the city and I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you. Alright, I want to thank Gio for working on formatting the noise ordinance that Daryl and Chris and the rest of the committee are working on. Now that's, that's something. And also Daryl for working on the traffic issues. Thank you very much. It was nice seeing you guys out there. Um also, I'm glad that you said we had fourteen applications currently. Is that correct? Okay, that's good news. And um thank you Judy for volunteering for the healthcare committee. Yeah, thank you for doing that.
If they make me the chair, I'm gonna make Jerry co-chair.
And I want to thank Marcy also for working on the generator grant and um. Anyway, hopefully that flood management evaluation will eventually lead to us getting a new flood map. That would be really nice, especially since it hasn't been updated since nineteen ninety. And also thank you to our department presenters, Keith and Judge Valenzuela and Ms. Clark and also Darren. Thank you very much. Everybody's working really hard and we appreciate the information that you provide to us. So thank you. Alright, and with that, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting.